Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College education station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Elirian. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Thank you, and as promised, I said I'd start reading statements before each meeting to follow my predecessor. Let's see, today's statement will be "The best view of big government is in the rearview mirror as you're driving away from it."[77.22][77.22](laughter)
I like that one.
March 24th, 1982, the man turned 91 yesterday, Ronald Reagan. Thank you. You may continue.
He said 91?
He turned 91 yesterday.
I thought it was 70 something.
Okay, there are no appointments this morning. Under resolutions, I need a motion to approve the job and family services bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
There are no advances this morning. Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, yes, I have, uh, issues with 31402, 31502, and 31602 regarding advertising for solid waste. I'm still in the middle of looking that over right now, trying to see whether or not, um, we can tie it in with our current marketing that we're doing with the county. I wanted to see if we can get some better pricing. I'm only about a week away. If we could hold that part up for another week and decide next week.
I don't have a problem if you want to hold it for a week.
Okay, just one week?
I don't have a problem with it either, but what do you mean by tying it in?
Well, if we're gonna be using, um, the economic development program from last year and use that, uh, money to advertise, I want to see if we can get a better deal by consolidating all of our marketing and maybe using a combined force to negotiate and get better pricing.
Good idea.
Just give me another week.
Yeah, and while we're talking about that, I thought too, we can, uh, we could probably work, I think, uh, jobs and family first and-
The One Stop has some too.
One Stop and solid waste and Ron with their economic development could work to get some additional jobs in the county. And I've been saying this for a long time, but I think what we could do is companies that are recycling that are outside of the state of Ohio, invite them into Lorain County, see if we can't approach them, give them some incentives to come in here, and possibly use a combination of solid waste money, economic development money, whatever we can to entice these companies into Lorain County to create more jobs and, uh, start some recycling right here in Lorain County. When you stop and think about all the things that can be recycled, and there must be a lot of industries out there that are doing this, they're just not in Lorain County. And we've got everything in Lorain County they need. We've got the airport, we've got the water, we've got it all.
Okay, so can we put that on hold, those three?
Sure. Any others?
That's it.
Okay. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
And so moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
A personal summary sheet, I did not see one.
I did not either.
This week.
Uh, there is not one this week.
I need to approve the semi-annual revolving loan fund report for the period of July 1st, 2001 through December 31st, 2001, as prepared by the Lorain County Community Development Department. This report reflects an available cash balance as of December 31st, 2001 of $455,386.20. This does not reflect the $100,000 awarded to Wellington and Whirlaway and the transfer of $15,000 for the 216 Third Street, Elir, Ohio, and $50,000 for the 2002 LAMP program. Now, after these transfers, the available balance will be approximately $290,000, due to authorize the present execute on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd authorize the Lorain County Domestic Relations Court Juvenile Division to submit grant applications to establish the success for youth as created by Lorain County Domestic Relations Court to focus on juveniles who are low functioning and struggling in an educational environment. The youth involved will be provided with case management services and job training and readiness for the work field. Education will also be emphasized for youths who are believed to be capable of completing and succeeding school. This grant does not require a local match and will be effective August 1st, 2002 through July 31st, 2003. Funding will be Community Foundation of Greater Lorain County in the amount of $120,000 and the Sisters of Charity Foundation in the amount of $60,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I would just like to comment that I think this is a good thing, but I also, uh, I think I'm taking a page from Commissioner Vassie's book. If in fact this funding is granted and this program is in place, at the end of the funding cycle, I do not want this to automatically become a general fund obligation. Um, in the past, we've had some wonderful programs that have started and then they're not renewed by dollars, and I think that we need to be very cautious about the dollars that we're expending, and so I'd just like to add that caveat to it.
And please, make that a part of the record.
Make it a part of the resolution.
Thank you. While you're the mover, do you want to make that a part of the resolution?
Yes, I'll amend my motion.
Is that agreeable with you, Commissioner Moore, as the second?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd authorize the Ohio Department of Transportation to proceed with a closure by way of a cul-de-sac on Kipton Nickel Plate Road east of State Route 58 at the U.S. Route 20 intersection in Pittsfield Township. ODOT has contacted the county engineer regarding a project that they are proposing at this intersection, which has numerous accidents, in part because of Kipton Nickel Plate Road entering State Route 58 from the east, approximately 100 feet south of U.S. Route 20. Traffic moving in and out of this road is very dangerous and also ties up traffic. At ODOT's request, the county engineer has studied several alternatives to the present alignment. After meeting with Pittsfield Township and the JVS, the county engineer recommends installing a cul-de-sac on Kipton Nickel Plate Road east of State Route 58. This is also ODOT's preferred alternative and will include this in their intersection plans and construction and will be at their cost. This construction is planned for fiscal year 2005.
I would like to ask a question of Mr. Miletty from the county engineer's office. Wayne, I know that, um, there's been conversation with the Joint Vocational School on this issue, and I'm assuming that they're in agreement with this. While I realize that this addresses the safety issue, that there's a feeder from the school that goes right out onto this road, and if the cul-de-sac is put there, it's going to require any traffic from the school at that entrance to go north on Kipton Nickel Plate. They won't have access from that side road to, um, 58 and/or 20.
Yeah, the, um, excuse me, the driveway north of the school goes to Kipton Nickel Plate, and then it would have to head east, the traffic. If you put a-
No, it's not east, it's north.
The cul-de-sac would be to the west.
Yeah, but it would, well, I guess I'm turning around. I'm facing north on 58, is that 58 runs north and south?
Right.
Kipton Nickel Plate runs north and south also. This driveway comes off from the west.
Nickel Plate's east and west.
Yeah, if you're east and west.
Yeah, see where-
It runs parallel to Route 20.
It was 20 then, I'm sorry, but anyway, I've got 20 and 58 mixed up, but the issue is that that traffic coming from the JVS will have to go only one way, to the right. It cannot go to the left because the cul-de-sac will keep it from having access to either 20 or 58. And I'm assuming that that's okay with the JVS, but I really would like some commitment from them on this issue too.
Yeah, they had a meeting with Pittsfield and the JVS and John of our office, and this is what they, um, agreed to at that meeting, so-
Okay, well-
JVS is aware.
This is kind of my favorite road to get there, that's why I'm familiar with it.[606.66][606.66](laughter)
Do you want to hold the letter from JVS?
Is there any timeframe for us to do this today?
Uh, we have some time yet, Commissioner. We do have some time.
I don't know how you feel about it.
Well, I'm willing to hold it if you need some questions answered.
I just think that the JVS needs to officially buy into this via a letter or something, so, because it's gonna be an issue for them. And sometimes what happens is you have these meetings and you decide on a course of action, and then after it becomes effective or in the process, people say, "Oh, we don't like that." It never happens to us here, of course.[646.41][646.41](laughter)
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll move to table it.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Vassie?
May I ask a question, please?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Okay.
I was wondering if you could ask the engineer, uh, the figures on the number of accidents there, because we go by there every day, every afternoon, and I haven't seen an accident there in several years, and I'm just wondering what the figures are that are requiring this.
Okay, could you get that in your report when you get back with us, Wayne?
Yeah.
Okay. Or do you have it now with you?
I, uh, no, Commissioner, I don't have it now, but-
Okay.
Oh, they were studied by ODOT, and, uh, there were substantial accidents on their accounts, so we get that information back.
Can you just get that information for us?
Sure.
Usually, they base their decisions on the number of accidents, because I know if, when we worked on stoplights, they always came back and some warranted a stoplight because of the number of accidents and some didn't.
They want to upgrade the intersection with left turns on 58. That's a big thing.
That'd be good.
And then have a right turn also.
So do we know what all three are doing here? Are they going to get the letter from JVS, or do you want me to do that?
Can't hear you.
Is it on?
Just so we all know what we're doing, uh, do you want the engineer's office to get the letter from JVS?
Yeah, since they're handling the project, let them take care of it.
Okay. Hey, Wayne?
Very good, yes.
Thanks, Wayne.
Okay, number 13, I need to approve and enter into contracts on behalf of Domestic Relations Court. The first one for psychiatric and psychological services, for services during the period effective retroactive to January 1st, 2002 to June 30th, 2003, at the rate of $90 per hour, one and one-half hours per week. It's reduced by an amount paid by the client, individual clients and families not to exceed the actual cost of the services. And also a working agreement between Lorain Umatat and the Juvenile Facilities Complex for ongoing services as specified in the working agreement during the existing fiscal year.
There's someone that would like to be recognized?
Mr. Ritter, Dan Ritter.
I think people want to speak on this issue, it looks like, so if you'd like to come to the podium and state your name, we would appreciate that.
My name is Kitty Mazes, and I'd just like to make a few comments. First, I'd like to commend the court system for initiating this effort on court referrals for, um, domestic violence and, but I do have a few concerns. Um, I'd like to know if the court is enforcing any type of quality standard care when they are referred to these offices or this particular office. Also, I'd like to know, is it necessary to have a contract with an office? Would it not be just as easy to give the people a list of offices to go to and let them pick and choose who they'd like to see, since a doctor is a personal choice? And also, is the court system paying for these referrals, or is the person paying for these referrals? Um, an evaluation is something that can be a wide range from a family tree to a depression screening. I think the court has to demand that if they're gonna get involved in this, that they have to take legal responsibility, that they're referring someone that could kill themselves from seeing these doctors, and are they gonna take legal responsibility if a person does from a court ordered referral, go to these doctors and not get a quality standard care evaluation? Um, what I'm concerned about is the, how necessary it is for these appointments to be documented. Um, and I think the first evaluation needs to be with a psychiatrist, not a therapist. A psychiatrist can refer someone out or give someone medication where a therapist cannot. A therapist would have to refer them out. And I believe that if you are in a court situation, that you are being referred to a doctor, the evaluation is very important because these people are at the point of already exploding. They need immediate evaluation. An evaluation can stream from one appointment to five appointments. The court has to say, "Okay, this has to be done in one appointment. We have to know what's, what's wrong with this person. We have to have a treatment set up for this person. We have to have someone oversee that these people are following up on their treatment." There's no use in sending someone for an evaluation and then not have anybody that's qualified to oversee that they are following through. If someone is diagnosed with depression, it doesn't do them any good to be diagnosed and not have anybody know about it, um, to not have them referred out for medication. And I want to know if, like, they've asked the question, "Is this facility have a psychiatrist on staff, or is it a facility that needs to be referred out?" Who is doing the first evaluations? What does the evaluation consist of? A depression screening needs to be mandatory with these evaluations. It cannot be acceptable that a family tree is done and then a person is billed for an evaluation. There are standards, um, forms that can be purchased, that everything is documented. I believe these sessions need to be recorded. It has to be something that is, there's no room for anybody to slip through the cracks of being diagnosed and then not treated, because then we have failed. It doesn't matter how many people you send out to be referred, and I think the court system, if they're going to do this, they need to have somebody in place that will then, that is qualified to go in and say, "Okay, you have an evaluation. What was that person's evaluation, and what treatment are we gonna give them?" And make sure that these people get the treatment. Record keeping is so important. Um, there are so many things, a history of symptoms need to be done. There are several things that could save a person's life, and I think before you just contract with someone, you should demand certain steps are taken. I mean, this, this is a big thing. You're sending someone out to be treated that they could die from, and if you don't know what kind of treatment you're contracting, I don't think that it should be done. I think a person should have a choice then.
The issue is here, we're, this approve and enter into contracts on behalf of Domestic Relations Court. I don't think I see anybody here from Domestic Relations to-
Yeah, there is.
Oh, are they? Okay, so maybe you could answer some of the questions that she's brought up? Okay.
I think, Kitty, I think what you're talking about is not just one individual's life, but it could cause not only suicides, but also injury to other individuals.
Most people that are in the court system are in domestic or for domestic violence or whatever. It would mean that the person killing their family, the person beating their wife, this is not something people do unless they have a brain disorder, and a brain disorder can range from depression. It's just like some people have heart diseases, people get diseases of their brain, and it makes them function unappropriately, irrational, and it doesn't help you to send them out to get help until you find out what's stemming. You have to find out what is the stem.
I know, but we're talking about another issue. What I want to talk about is the contract that we have right now and why we're doing it.
Right. Unfortunately, this contract is strictly for-
Could you say your name?
Dan Ritter, uh, juvenile court, domestic relations. It's strictly for the sex offender program for juveniles, for pre-adolescent juveniles ranging from the age of nine to 12 years old. Um, we've had the sex offender program for a little, or close to five years, and we had nothing for these juveniles except to send them out to go for individual counseling. So what we're trying to do now is set up a program with Psych and Psych Services to have four to eight individuals go through a treatment together.
Okay, so we, right now, we have no program in place, correct?
Right now, no, we don't.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is, there's two agreements here. The first agreement is that we're going to offer an hour and a half per week, or is that an hour and a half per week for a case? Because you said five to eight people.
Right, per, uh, per group, per case for the four to eight individuals.
Okay, so it's an hour and a half for that group?
Exactly.
Okay, so this is a group?
Group. We're gonna try to get, um, get them in together and get them out together.
Group counseling.
Group counseling.
So it's group? Good, so this is group counseling then?
Yes.
Okay.
Instead of just having them individual, we found that, you know, through some of the studies, uh, sex offenders actually do better, get rehabilitated a little bit better in a group setting with their peers, instead of just going to individual with one counselor, and, you know, each individual counselor is obviously a little bit different. So we're gonna try to keep it focused with one of the counselors, that's Psych and Psych. Um, I believe that'll be Pat Chimer, who's going to be running the program.
Okay, and this is something that, these are already people that have been convicted?
Yeah.
Yeah, but nevertheless, even though they're convicted, um, brain disorders doesn't have an age.
But that's not the issue right now?
Yes, it is, they're part of the issue, because a brain disorder does not have an age on it, and if they're evaluated at a young age and treated, and they realize that it is a brain disorder and it's not just a bad kid, I think that we have a better chance of helping society. And, and it all depends on how we construct the agreement with whatever agency it is. Furthermore, I'd like to know if we went out for other quotes. Is this the only agency that bid on this?
I believe this was the only agency that would work with juveniles at this age group.
Did we? Where, in the papers, or how was it publicized that this contract was coming up?
Um, I believe we went to Psych and Psych as well as, um, it's now Applewoods, out in Lorain.
What about- There's about 20 something agencies in Lorain County. And what I'm concerned about is the therapist or counselor, what type of degree or, you know, how they're trained, and is it psychiatrists, don't you believe that these people should be evaluated first? Before you can put someone into a group counseling, you have to evaluate an individual and what their problem is.
Well, when they're, when they're found, I mean, when they're found delinquent of a sex offense, I don't, I mean, we have-
Medication can-
Excuse me, but he's at the podium. We have an issue here which can go, is a lot deeper than what we're looking at right now. Okay, and I don't want to go into that discussion. What I'm looking at is this is a new program that doesn't exist right now, correct?
We have a sex offender program, but not for pre-adolescent, nine to 12 years.
Right, not from nine to 12. So this is a new program to help four to nine children that have issues, hopefully?
Yes, who we cannot, uh, send down to the Department of Youth Services. So they're gonna be in our community. You can only send them at the age of 12.
Okay.
On the DYS to receive any kind of treatment, so.
Are these, uh, youth incarcerated at the detention home, or depends?
It depends, usually not, they're not gonna stay there.
Who decides on the four to, who makes that decision?
On who stays at detention home?
No, who makes the decision on the people you're going to pick for this program?
The, I, we have a new INR team, um, and actually, it's with the sex offender probation officers, the two that are in charge of the program. I mean, they get these kids in if they're found delinquent of a sex offense, they go to two specific sex offender officers, and we have to get them evaluated. And usually evaluations take place at Psych and Psych, um, the Guidance Centers, which is now Applewoods, as well as we use the Makita Center. Those are the three, Makita Centers out of Kylott County, and those are usually the three agencies that deal with sex offenders. Guidance Center as well as Psych and Psych are the two that we know of that, um, deal with sex offenders.
Okay, so what now, if you don't mind, what's the, what's wrong with this program then? If you can come to the microphone.
What I'm concerned about is the guidelines for the evaluation. An evaluation is many things. What, my husband was a court referral, and his evaluation consisted of a family tree that a fourth grader could have done, and we paid $240 for that. My husband committed suicide, and if he was properly evaluated, he had a major depression, and he could have been medicated. But because the evaluation was so vague, he never got the help he needed. So the program is good, but the evaluation, the way it's done, how long it takes, I realize some doctors consider that five appointments can be a time limit for an evaluation. It has to be done in one appoint. I've been to enough doctors now, I've done surveys, I know that evaluation should be done in one appointment. It should be done by a psychiatrist, because most people that are doing sex offense, domestic violence, whatever, that behavior is not a normal behavior. They have a problem in their brain, and nine times out of 10, it's a chemical imbalance. Medication can help them. It alleviates them from acting out irrationally or abnormally. And until we do the evaluation properly and by someone that is a psychiatrist, I, in my heart, believe that a first evaluation needs to be done by a psychiatrist. My husband was also through the same office diagnosed with a major depression. The numbers were there, but no one referred him out for medication. So what good does it do unless there's someone that can say, "Okay, you have this." You have to diagnose a person, an individual, with what their problem is, and then give them group therapy, because I don't care if you don't diagnose that person, you can talk to your blue in the face, they can't rationalize what you're saying.
Correct. Now, what, could I have him answer those?
Sure.
So I guess the issue that she has is that there's no evaluation before you put the children in there?
There's an evaluation done, we call it a risk assessment, low, moderate risk for juveniles over the age of 13. If they come back, high risk, we do not keep them in the community, they go down to the Department of Youth Services where they receive treatment. And there's a certain standard that the evaluators will use, some is family drug use, how many times, how many, um, how many offenses they do have, how many sex offenses they do have, delinquent behavior, schoolwork, um, there's, there's a list of things that they use. Of course, I'm not the evaluator, so I don't know exactly what they use, but we have, like I said, Psych and Psych, Guidance Centers, Makita Center. Makita Center also does an ABLE test, which is new, and if we feel that the juvenile also needs to go on, um, to get this done, it's where they show pictures up on the screen and they measure the pupil and, and stuff like that, um, and that's how the evaluations occur. There's a big difference between, there's, most of the studies done are with adult sex offenders, there's not many studies done out there with juvenile sex offenders, so actually, this is pretty new. Obviously, the program's five years old, so this is all new, um, to the courts as well, so everyone's trying to do the best that they possibly can. I mean, if a kid is found delinquent of a sex offense, we know that, that he's a sex offender, he needs some kind of help so he doesn't do it again. I mean, um, he's either gonna be low, moderate, or high risk. Obviously, a juvenile under the age of 13, can't send him to the Department of Youth Services, so we're trying to get, it doesn't matter if he's low, moderate, or high risk, we have to keep him in the community and do something with him anyways.
So do you see this as more of a work in progress, like a beginning of something bigger? Do you see?
Yeah, oh, yes, the pre-analyst one, sure. I mean, before, they're just-
I mean, it's better than what we have right now, which is nothing.
Oh, absolutely better, because they're just going to-
But we can improve this, we can, and maybe with some help from citizens like who's sitting next to you.
Sure.
Maybe there's a way to make this a better program.
Everybody's looking at, at different ways to do it. Um, there's different programs out there. Guidance Center runs it a little bit different. They use a 14-point scale on Psych and Psych. They'll keep a juvenile in for up to a year.
No, I understand, but what I see is usually when people are involved as much and they, and they just, I mean, like, uh, she has, I think she has a lot to bring to the table.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have, uh, you know, our sex offender program, um, we have in, uh, we do three-month evaluations through, um, Department of Youth Services, and, um, we've had great results with the program.
Dan, who is working on this program? Who's, who did you say is directing it?
Um, Bill County will oversee it, but, uh, Jeff Kuiper, as well as Eric Grove, are the two probation officers assigned to the sex offender program.
Okay.
And who's doing the, uh, Pat Chimer will be doing the, um, the group at Psych and Psych.
Okay, um, if it's okay with the board, I would like to sit, sit down with Bill and possibly yourself and Kitty, and let's go over this till we, we may just be starting it new now, but let's see if we can do the best we can-
Sure.
-that while we're starting it, because we're talking about the safety of lives here. And, you know, when a person is mentally ill like that, they don't realize that they're mentally ill, and most of the time, the families don't either, because they think they're acting normal. They don't know what normal is, because they never had the opportunity to be that way, so they think they're normal. So, until it's brought to their attention, and even as a child, most times, the family think, "Okay, it's a bad kid, just put him in the corner," well, they don't realize that the bad kid is ill.
That's accurate.
Until we let them know through the court system, since you have the opportunity through the court system, then let's try the best we can.
Sure, and then that's one of the things the sex offender program works with, is with, not only the juvenile, but the family. Here's what you look for. Is your kid withdrawing? Is he isolating himself? And that's what we find with a lot of these kids, it's isolation, they're sitting at the computer, and they're not getting the social skills out there. So that's what this program is for, to hit the nine-year-olds- So, that's what this program is for, to hit the nine-year-olds right there. Why are you isolating yourself? Tell the parents, "Here, you're isolating yourself, you see your kid's sitting there, you have to do something about it. Talk to him." And that's what we're trying to do.
But I think you've already been doing it, though, right?
What's that?
This is a backdated contract to January first, so it seems like to me that you already have the program in place?
It's ready to go.
Is it already going on?
No, it's not going on.
Oh, okay.
We're waiting for it.
That's why I saw the date.
It's ready to go. I believe they have, I want to say they have six juveniles.
Okay.
Waiting in the wings, so.
With one week, I mean, could you sit down and work with some people, and then next week, we could maybe-
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, I support the way it is, but if you guys would like to enhance what you have already, and make it better, that's fine.
I don't know.
But I, this is something I will support. I just want to make sure everyone's happy with the program before. This is something I think we can grow on and develop.
It's either that, or, I mean, the grant will be paying for this, the families will pay, be paying a $10 copay or something. Anything else, the families are going to have to go out and find their own type of treatment.
Well, I appreciate you coming.
Yeah, Dan, is there a not-to-exceed amount on this contract? It talks about an hourly rate, but is there a maximum amount?
Yeah, we're, we took it at fifty weeks. It's 6,700 is the max that we'll be able to go with this, and I highly doubt it goes that high.
That's the grant, right?
This will be out of the sex offender reclaim grant. Most of it's now in the professional services, and we'll have to appropriate more funding over to the contract services. But we do have the funding there to run this.
Okay, can you and Kitty get together on a date and a time, that maybe we can all sit down and discuss the issue?
Sure, and anytime she wants to set up time, anytime's great.
It's okay to hold this for next week?
I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both for sharing that information. Thank you.
There is a Part B, though, we could act on Part D.
Oh, is it? I thought there were-
Are they together?
No. It looks like two different, they're two different agreements, A and B, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I think we can act on B.
Okay, so we'll hold A. We're going to hold A.
Yes.
And I'll move on B.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
It authorizes the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Sheriff's Department to enter into a DNC Communications Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for a service agreement for the years 2003 and 2004 for maintenance of the Sheriff's Department's portable radios. Cost for the maintenance is $4,248, and will be paid for from the Sheriff's Contract Services account. Need authorize the President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
It authorizes the local emergency planning district to apply for $71,000 to the State Emergency Response Commission for county hazmat programs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd to approve and enter into agreement between the Lorain County Local Emergency Planning Committee, that's LEPC, and the Lorain County Emergency Management Agency, that's effective retroactive to January first, 2001, ending December 31st, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd to advertise for bids for the disposal service at the One Day Litter Collection Event, which is Pride Day. This event will take place on May 18th, 2002, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on February 15th and 22nd, 2002. Bids will be open on March 1st, 2002, at 2:00 p.m. here in the public hearing room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd to authorize the release and payment of retainedage to R.A. Joseph Construction Incorporated of Avon, Ohio, in the amount of $2,528 for work performed on the Community Development Block Grant Project Eaton Township Elevator. The Community Development Block, excuse me, Community Development Department and Eaton Township trustees have indicated the work is complete, and they are satisfied with the work performed. Contract is complete, and the contractor has submitted the necessary paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd to authorize the release and payment of retainedage to Bender Trucking and Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $2,484.08 for work performed off the demolition, 219-215 Court Street of Illyria, Ohio. The contract is complete, and the contractor has submitted the necessary paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd to authorize the transfer of $971,576.42, plus any accrued interest in custodial account, to the general revenue account of the county treasurer, and then close this custodial account. This was the recommendation of the Investment Advisory Committee on their meeting on February 4th, 2002.
John and I have had some discussion on this, and I'm still not clear. Is this an amendment to the budget certificate, or it's not additional money, is it? Have you found out, John? I know you were going to try and contact Mark Stewart, I believe.
Good morning, John Rhodes, Budget Director, the Commissioner's Budget Director. What's happening here is there is an internal transfer of money by the Treasurer's Office from what he calls his custodial account. It's movement of one pot of money to another pot, to his active account. This would not increase the general fund revenues of the certificate for the year. So, it's an internal movement of cash, and I had discussions with the Treasurer yesterday afternoon on that.
Thank you, John. Thanks for the conversation.
You're welcome.
So moved. Second. Mr. Moore? Aye. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd to approve and enter into a two-year contract between the Lorain County Board of Commissioners and United American Capital Corporation, effective retroactive to January 1st, 2001.
No, that's two.
Two, expiring December 31st, 2004.
Three.
Three, okay, that's three, that's correct. Not to exceed $4,000 per month. This contract amount remains the same as in previous agreements.
So moved. Do you want a second? You would do it. But I will. Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Let me go back. Was there an issue on number 16? Was that supposed to be 2001 also?
No.
Was that supposed to be 2002, number 16, then, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I thought that was, do you want to make that note? On number 16?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Still getting it.
2001, on number 16.
Oh, it is supposed to be 2001?
Yes.
It was a backdate, it was?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. It is, yes.
2001 is correct.
Okay.
I'd to appoint Mayor Deanna Hill of North Ridgeville as a member of Tenawaka for the year 2002, as recommended with the life of Lorain County Community Alliance.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd to approve and enter into contract on behalf of Lorain County Children and Families Council with the Illyria YMCA, and authorize payment for implementation of the current Leadership Training Institute. The state-recognized leadership program is offered to Lorain County parents to give them tools to influence policies and services for a 20-week curriculum. Need authorize the President to execute on behalf of the Board, and I understand the funding is coming from the North Family Foundation in the amount of $27,286.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd to advertise notice of public hearing on amendment to fiscal year 1999 Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Formula Program Agreement with the How Department of Development. The hearing will be held on Thursday, February 21st, 2002, at 10:40 a.m. in the public hearing room. I'd to publish the notice in the Chronicle Telegram on February 7th, 2002.
I think we better move, especially since it's in the paper today. So moved.
Second.
A discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
A resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the principal amount of $119,000 for the purpose of paying cost of, one, constructing water improvement number 119, and sanitary sewer improvement number 105 within the Lorain County General Sewer District, in anticipation of the collection of special assessments; two, constructing the West Road Melody Lane sanitary sewer and surface connections together with necessary upprices thereto; and three, preparing plans and specifications for the Murray Ridge Waterline. The bond shall bear the interest rate of 4.40% per year, commencing June 1st, 2002.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that Mr. Cortez has some comments about this.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. I have been working with the Budget Department, and I would request that this issue be tabled at this time. I am going to gain some information on this, and probably, if I'm correct, make a recommendation to the Board that we retire this debt rather than issue bonds on it. But I don't have complete information yet, and I would like to hold this so we can make the best decision for the county.
You'll be ready next week?
I'll be ready next week, sir.
For one week? Okay. I don't have a problem with that. Thank you.
No, I'll move to hold it.
Okay. Second.
Okay, Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, reports, comments, Mr. Cortez, Administrator?
No comments, no reports.
Mr. Innes, the prosecutor is not available this morning. Commissioners report?
Commissioner Vassie?
Yeah. One of the CCAO committee meetings that I'm on is the Infrastructure and Environment Committee, and we'll be meeting Monday in Columbus. And I brought up an issue that I, that they're going to put on the agenda, and that's regarding the transit and additional funding, or using some of the state and federal funding at the discretion of Commissioners. And since I brought this up, I'm finding out that a lot of counties have this problem with transit. So, I don't know what the committee will decide, but I'll report back when I get back. But they're also, they also have some other issues on the agenda, solid waste issues, there's two of those, one Senate bill and one House bill, water and sewer issues, and I think that was it, and some others that may come up from the floor. So, I'll report on that when I get back. And I've asked John to go with me, so that we can bring some figures and some information in regards to our transit system.
Okay, great.
I just have one question. You talked about additional funding. Additional funding from where?
Well, that's what we're going to talk about.
Going to find it, right?
We will try to find it, or else pass some legislation that will give us the Commissioners the discretion on how the money is used now. In other words, right now, all we can buy is buses, and we have no, we can't use that money for operation and maintenance. But I think it should be the Commissioners' discretion as to how that money's being used. And not only that, but they're reducing what they're giving to us. So, we want to squawk a little bit about the reductions, too.
Okay, I think those are federal dollars that come with the caveat that they buy the buses.
Right. So, maybe between CCAO and NACO, maybe we could make a difference and make some changes.
Okay. Of interest, too, is the, an article was in the paper this past week about the monies that were allocated to the various states, and Ohio didn't come in very high on the priority list. And so, that's going to make a difference to the Ohio Department of Transportation and projects that they do in our county and other counties, too.
That's right. And if there's any other issues that you'd like me to bring to the table, let me know.
Well, that's one of them, if it, if it did, okay.
That's a big one.
And Dan and I talked about solid waste issues, too, and he gave me some information that I could use. That's all I have, thanks.
Commissioner Blair?
Thank you. On Wednesday of this week, I attended a presentation by Logi Sync at the Glide at the Lorain County Community College. Bob Campana invited a variety of business leaders to hear a presentation about Logi Sync, which is a 1993-founded technology company. Ed Yenney, the president, explained the possibilities for products with embedded electronic controls. According to Yenney, embedded systems are web pages, computers talking to one another in a controlled network via email. Logi Sync and Glide, whose operations are funded by the Lorain County Commissioners, are looking for business partners who could use this completely embedded solution. Also, Lorain County, the Commissioners and Glide were featured in February magazine issue, including an article about, quote, "The Best Investment in the New Economy," which cited the county, Glide, and the college partnerships. This week also, I attended, I can't find my notes on it, but Dr. Rodney Link sponsors a good deed, I think probably quarterly. He's done this for the past five years, and he had two students there, an Amherst Marionell Steel awardee, and the other was a Midview High School student. One got a computer, and the other received some gift certificates, et cetera. And this was the first time I attended. This was really a nice program that Dr. Link sponsors, and I think he has applications out for a new round of funding, so to speak, and the deadline is March 31st. I have copies of them, if anybody's interested, honoring young people who do good deeds, and it was really wonderful. Also, on a Friday, I, the Community Alliance met here, and we talked about commuter rail in Lorain County. I just want to pass that out to you. And apparently, commuter rail in Lorain County from Cleveland to the Grove Site in Lorain is in trouble. And so, I want to let you know that there's been a task force of the Community Alliance that's been formed, and we will be meeting Monday, February 11th, at 11:00 a.m. at Lorain County Community College, to talk about what kind of position we should take as a county, take as a county and how we should proceed on this issue and the issue will be heard verbally at the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting of NOAAAC on February the 15th. It will be followed the next month by a formal report to the TAC Committee and they meet the third Friday of each month and then the Transportation Advisory Committee is supposed to make a recommendation to the full NOAAAC Board. The full NOAAAC Board will hear this issue as it is scheduled now in April. So, I'm not happy with Lorraine County's being kinda left out in the dark, so to speak, on this particular corridor. There is the suggestion that perhaps an alternate corridor might be from Cleveland to Alaria to Lorraine and I think NOAAAC is going to look at that in this process. The negativity is coming from the three west shore communities of Bay Village, Lakewood, and Rocky River and supported strongly by their congressman, Dennis Kucinich. One of the issues that they have cited is the Surface Transportation Board's approval of a reduction of freight rail traffic on this corridor to 13.9 routes a day, which is fine, but that agreement that was negotiated with the Surface Transportation Board speaks to freight traffic, it does not address commuter rail. And as I understand, the issue that was presented to us last Friday at the Alliance meeting presently, there are only four trains a day on these tracks and that commuter rail, although it won't be a reality today or tomorrow and there are other issues to be addressed, such as how this would be paid for. If this plan goes through to NOAAAC as planned, we will not even have the option of saying whether or not we would like to pay for something like this, it will be removed from the agenda and I think that's entirely inappropriate. So, those are my comments for today.
Betty, do you know if commuter rail is as noisy as freight rail?
Wow.
It seems like Amtrak is not quite as noisy. I don't know, I may be wrong.
I don't know an answer to that.
I mean, I think that was their objection was because of the noise along that area, Avon, Avon Lake and Lakewood and down there, not Avon, but along the...
Well, but it isn't Avon and Avon Lake that are objecting to this, it's Bay Village, Rocky River, and Lakewood.
But I mean, it's along that corridor?
Yes.
That might be a question that needs an answer. Was that their objection, was the noise?
They objected on the basis of... Well, someplace here, I think it lists their objections.
They object any trains going through their neighborhoods, they made a pretty good deal a couple of years ago and the rest of this county's paying for it because I'm only about a quarter mile and I hear it all night long. But that issue could go on for three hours if we're gonna figure out who's the blame.
Yeah, okay, and you talked about embedded technology, what do you mean by that? It's not embedded into a human, is it?
No, it's embedded into a computer.
Okay.
And to go back, it says here, in addition to the STB agreement, excuse me, representatives cited safety, noise, and pollution concerns.
Yeah, there it is.
Of course, we're not gonna talk about any pollution concerns on the part of automobiles because there are none.
Uh-oh.
You'd be very interested in that embedded computer and they had two examples of existing pieces of equipment that businesses use and how they inserted this embedded mechanism in it so that they could electronically monitor. One was checking the level of gas in a gas well and they inserted this little instrument there and then they could check it by computer. And there was another example, too, I'm not quite conversant on that one, but they're actually systems that are in place that they have done and what they wanted to do was let various businesses in the county and surrounding areas know of the availability of this particular feature so that they might be able to use it in their businesses. There was a representative from Ford Motor Company that was there, Beckett Industries had two representatives there and I was told this was the second time that they had attended a meeting and Springer Enterprises was there and somebody from BFI and I think it was an interesting topic and they're looking to expand this technology in our county and to make this grow and I think this is the coming wave, so I just wanted to let you know, it was very exciting.
It definitely is the coming wave, with the invention of telephones and the televisions, now the computers, technology is it, that's it. Pretty soon, we're gonna have robots for people.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I guess, why hasn't it been making some?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a point of clarification regarding item 23.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, go ahead.
The amount that's gonna be contracted with the YWCA is $20,087.55.
Say that again, please, Juan.
Twenty thousand, eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
Okay.
That's the contract amount.
Okay.
The award, the total award to the council is twenty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars.
Okay, do we need to do anything? Jim?
Yes.
We do?
Otherwise, we're back here, I believe that in order for the fiscal agent to release the funds, we're gonna need that in the resolution.
I move to amend item...
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three, to show the corrected figures as presented by Juan.
I'll second.
Amber discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye. I have a suggestion, you know, I think the figures, we talked about this before and it might be an oversight, but the figures should always be in the resolution and also maybe initials or something of who initiated to put this on the agenda, so that we know who to address our questions because sometimes it's pretty vague, we don't know who initiated the agenda item.
That'll be Jim's job, he better know who that's coming from, right?
Well, I know, but it could even be, I just, I have no question if something is on from Lorraine County Children and Families Council, it better have come from Juan.
Exactly.
But there are some other issues of things that go around and even just letters that are generally sent out.
Yeah, that's true.
If the secretaries type their reference initials, this is a big bugaboo of mine, if I have a question, I know who to ask who typed it, so I...
You're smiling at me.
I think she likes a big bugaboo. Okay, thank you. Let's see, I guess it's my turn. What's the status on the Port Authority? That's been, I mean, do we have the money from the state yet? Do we have, I mean, can you give me an update on that?
I'd be pleased to do so, Commissioner. In fact, just this week, we had a meeting with the players involved with the Port Authority. Right now, we have a small holdup with the state concerning our trust indenture. It's quite a large document, 150, 250 pages of what I'll call legal mumbo jumbo, very complicated document. When we sent it down to the state, they requested some changes, it came back, we made some changes and the document's been going back and forth between our representatives and the state. We're sending what we believe to be the final copy of that to the state this week and hopefully the parties will agree to the listed terms and conditions and legal jargon in there. Once that's done, we'll be able to obtain the state's million dollars. The money's still there, the money's still available to us, but...
So, we're not gonna lose the money?
No, sir.
That's what I was...
They want all the i's dotted, all the t's crossed, they're handing us a million dollars and...
Because the members, I've pointed, they keep, the joke is when we're gonna, you know, when can we meet, when can we get going?
Right.
Do we need to, because we did that at first, just to get the board going.
Correct.
I think it's, I mean, I'd like to get, I mean, do we need to expand the board today or do we wait or when do we wait to start pulling the trigger and making the authority a reality?
Are they even meeting yet?
No, they're not meeting yet because we don't have, we haven't turnkeyed it yet. We do need to, we had discussed over a period of time appointing additional board members. I would like to see us appoint at least two more board members and I'd like them to be confirmed from the commission of staff because we have a lot of money on the table, a lot of issues on the table.
No, we've talked about this and I think you mentioned Ryan Twining?
Yes.
And yourself, just to make sure that their policies are seen through?
I think if the board wants to continue to progress with this, I think that's imperative.
Do you think they need an attorney?
Well, we have an attorney.
That'll be up to the, no, that'll be up to the board to decide, right?
Well, the board has an attorney, we're using...
Calipres.
Well, it's say, Boyers, Peas, they're attorneys for the Port Authority.
I mean, do they attend the meetings because I'm sure there's a lot of legal issues, as you said, the packet is pretty thick.
They will probably be attending Port Authority meetings once you...
Whenever they start.
Right, whenever they start, once the board swears, I mean...
Let me ask you this, if we put you on it, can you guys, can you and Ryan take control and get this thing, we're putting you guys on, can you guys make it run now?
Oh, yes.
What you're trying to...
Well, we're, once again...
I feel like everyone's out there hanging on this and I would like to make sure we can...
Sure, I believe that we will be done now by the middle of March, once we receive the million dollars from the state and that's what's kinda slowing us a bit. We're already getting dates from Fitch's to do the credit rating with Fitch's, I believe that we'll, another three or four weeks. And I'd like to say, we've been keeping this issue active in-house, we've been working it and constantly paying attention to it. Some issues are a little bit beyond our control, such as the state requiring changes, but I think that we're very, very close and I'm very comfortable with our progress to date.
I'd rather have, I'd rather see the board get going now and know that the money's coming than if you, it sounds like to me it's just a matter of semantics right now, then why don't we get the Port Authority up and running?
That's, that's great.
I mean, we're running right up on a year, March 1st is when we passed it and...
We can certainly do that.
I'd like to see it before.
If you like to make the...
Let the board meet before.
If you like to make the additional appointments, we'll get the board together and we'll have our first meeting within the next couple of weeks, we'll get the schedules.
I would like to see that, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the board.
I would, too, because I've had complaints from the board member that I appointed, too.
Can we make a motion?
But my question, excuse me, my question would be, can you and Ron handle any more? You have so many issues on the plate now, can you, how many nights do you have available? About eight.
I think we'll be fine with it, Commissioner, there's gonna be activity with the Port Authority, but it won't be overwhelming and I think it's important to the county, so whatever the time is necessary, we'll make sure the time is there.
I think you'll be working it, I'm sure, during the day to ensure it, so...
During the day, if they meet in the evening, it really doesn't matter, this is in the best interest of the county, so we don't have a problem in how much time we have to dedicate.
I think it certainly is when we're talking about a million dollars.
Yes, it is.
Two and a half million.
Well, but a million dollars that was not ours to begin with.
I'd also like to report that we're probably going to go back down to the state in June and ask for some additional money.
Oh, great.
And that may sound a bit premature, but when I was down there the last time, they gave Dayton a straight-out cash infusion with no match, so I wanna go with our handout and I wanna ask for some money for Lorraine County without a match.
Yeah, I was all proud of you last year, now I'm like, they did without even a match.
Well, that was...
You gotta get to first base before you go to second.
They already had their Port Authority, they already were doing things.
Oh, okay.
And they went back and asked for more cash once they were up and running and I fully intend on getting in line for Lorraine County.
I'll let you off the...
Okay, so if you wanna, if you wanna go ahead with those appointments, that would be great and we'll get the meeting set up and then we'll move forward.
Yeah, okay, anything, speed it up. Do I have to make a motion then to appoint?
Yes.
Those, Jim Cortez and Ryan Twining to the Port Authority? Term of what's...
It'll be to a four-year term.
Four-year term, effective, we'll just start January of '02 and we'll go to...
Okay.
I would prefer personally not to go four years.
The, what's your prerogative?
I would prefer to go two and three.
Okay.
Nothing personal, but it's, I think we already got three members on there and I think Ryan's jumping up to say, "I don't want it," right?
Commissioners, I might suggest it's not uncommon, we could run this past your legal counsel or the Port Authority's legal counsel. Typically, on positions like this, you appoint the person holding the position, you appoint the county administrator, which presently is held by the administrator and the community development director.
Okay, why don't we do that?
That I hold and that way, you wouldn't have to restrict it to a term if Jim or I leave or depart under any other circumstances.
Not that that would ever happen, but I like that idea, then instead of the names itself, I'd rather appoint the position, so I'll withdraw my motion and make the motion that the county administrator and the community development director be appointed to the Port Authority and I think that would make better sense for us to ensure our policies.
Okay, and...
And I don't have a problem, I mean, it could be a running term then at that point, correct?
I think so, but the regulations do speak to four-year appointments, so we probably need to get some guidance where it asks, so we don't have to revisit this, that it's either by position or, as Commissioner Moore suggested, the two and the three-year term, so that we have either option that is effective under the law, okay, so we don't have to come back to this.
So, that's my motion.
Reword that.
It would be for, it would be by position if allowed, under the code, or for, if that's not permissible under the code...
Whatever the code would allow for a term.
For the terms.
Correct.
Okay.
As determined by the attorneys.
Correct.
The code, yeah.
And we'll get that right out to them today.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Amber discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, and I hope to hear from you in a couple of weeks on a status report again, correct?
I'm sure you'll remind me if you don't.
I do, once in a while. Thank you, that's all for my reporting.
Any old business?
None here.
Any business?
None.
No. Court correspondence?
I will be reading the weight.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Public comment.
Yeah, did you wanna speak to...
It's public speaking time, so I guess.
Sure.
Sheriff May, did you have a statement or, you just like hanging out with us, don't you? It's a public comment, Bob, I know you're going on vacation for two, three weeks, I don't...
Well, not today.
Ah.
We're talking about the letters.
Letters?
Well, my name is Robert Kish, I am resident of Valeria and I head the seven Cs, welcome to all in attendance. This is about the second largest or third largest group in attendance while I've stood here, which is good. I'd like to see more people in attendance. James Thurber said, "Women deserve to have more than 12 years between the ages of 28 But I'm bothered by that, one of us, one of the people in this room just turned 40 recently and then I keep recalling the headlines, never trust anybody over 40.
I was 30.
I am very lucky, I'm on my second 40. Anyway, this, I'd like to say, it's a matter, a lot of people never heard of What's a Matter You? That's a school of hard knocks. Prior to the A-bomb, I was schooled that matter can neither be created or destroyed. Fortunately, the man who was in charge of recycling is gone. It can change form, kudos to recycling. Shades of Themron, remember Themron last week? We got Themroned by Mr. Kucinich. While we've got shoes in the audience and those who will be on the eighth floor of the Justice Center will have parachutes, Cleveland has golden parachutes, they're a little higher up on the food chain. So, what I'm trying to say is that I don't think we need to stop at Mr. Kucinich. When I was having problems with the railroad in Pittsfield Township and nobody would give me a least bit of help, I went to an outfit called PUCO and they sent a representative out, Mr. Cortez, and we had some questions asked and the local township officials were unhappy, but perhaps, I'm unhappy, tell Cleveland, we don't want their airplanes flying over our airspace. Noise, pollution, all hours of the day and night, many more than four. So, a shoe fits, if we're allowed 13 trips a day, that's four trips a day, we're not, that's seven or eight trips a day, I figure we could use. We had a train that went from Lorraine to Cleveland, I don't know what the cost was, somebody could look that up. Okay, if it's for freight, let's put one mail car on. We have freight plus passengers, a mixed train, let's use the full capacity, even if we gotta have nine tenths of a train going through, I don't know how you do that. One day, there's no mail. However, I am in favor of the railroad, believe me, I do, I think transportation is needed, I've traveled to Europe and the transportation is very important. However, and this, I think, is the real sticking point, Mr. Kucinich, I saw in the paper, between 100 million and 200-plus million would be taken to initiate this. That's times six, if it's spent locally, that's 12 million dollars, or rather, no, 12, yeah, a bunch of dollars. What I'm saying is that I think their concern about Lorraine County may be getting too many of their dollars. Ohio's running out of dollars, we're running out of dollars and jobs. But, I don't see why, there's a train sitting in Wellington, a local, a diesel locomotive and I believe the gentleman would actually probably pay so he could drive his locomotive up and down the track between Lorraine and Cleveland. I don't know, I don't know the man that well. He also has passenger cars, they're old, but if we want nostalgia of yesteryear, we've got the combination right here. We've got room, we've got time, we've got track and we've got the capacity if we use these runs that are not being utilized. Anyhow, I'm tired of being a mushroom, we're only getting half the story. The half we didn't get was how much this railroad was gonna cost us, 10 million dollars a year to run? I think is excessive and 10 million a year, times six, is 60 million? Yeah, Cuyahoga County is envious. Let the sun shine in, did you lose a dog locally? Last week, they talked about a cat that got adopted and the owner had looked for the cat. Well, I know this week, a dog that got adopted, a five-pounder, so it's not a mean vicious dog that somebody threw out outside the road, it was a pet locally. That dog just got adopted in Parma. It's back at its owners, how, I don't know, I don't know the full story on that, but it'd be interesting to know. Details are incomplete. Is this the tip of an iceberg or was it webnapped? Like, we got webnapped? We got webnapped when our taxes paid over a quarter million dollars.
Every meeting, you know that?
Oh, yes, it's English, they got webnapped. We got webnapped of over a quarter million dollars, times six, if it had been spent locally rather than in Arkansas, is one and a half million dollars lost from the county. Anyhow, the other thing that I find is, it's like, it's an old joke I remember hearing about somebody was complaining that he wasn't getting paid what was due him and he confronted the person and the person said, "Well, you keep complaining like this, I'm not even gonna put your name in the hat." Well, my name's not in the hat, I found out. I didn't get any copies, fax copies the last two weeks, I didn't get fax copy this week. I found out through an informant, whose name is on the cover of the fax machine, my name's not on the fax copy cover sheet anymore. Neither is another individual who didn't get any copies. Will the fax, of this fax, come out? Tune in next week. Bye.
Thanks, Bob. Wait, just...
Commissioner, just for sake of clarification on one issue, because this is a very important issue, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the funding issue on commuter rail, and I need to put this out. If, in fact, we're able to gain cooperation and make application, 50% of the funding would come from federal dollars, 25% of the money would come from state dollars, so the monies that would have to be generated locally and, once again, I'm not sure that they would be or they could be, but we don't even get a chance to get to the table to find out without some cooperation from our neighbors to the east. We're only talking about 25% of the cost and I think that's important to realize and recognize. We would be missing out on 75% of hundreds of millions of dollars if we don't get to the table and that's what the problem with this issue is, we just wanna get to the table and have an ability to at least try to access these dollars. an ability to at least try to access these dollars, and then go from there.
It seems like a certain congressman's stopping us from getting to the table.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Well, that's what happened with State Route Two, the widening there. Cuyahoga County, just because they're on No Wacka, and they're the largest county, wants to control, and they want everything from them. But the problem is, it's a two-way street, doesn't only come into Lorraine County, it also goes into Cuyahoga County.
I simply want Lorraine County to have the ability to make a choice for themselves. Nothing more, nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Annette Caldwell, and I just was listening at, on sixteen, on thirteen, and I was just wondering, what is your process in doing your contracts? When I look at the juvenile system, and I have worked in the community for a long time, and all the different programs that I started, many of them just touched the surface and then it stopped. Is there some type of guideline you use to even start them before you finish finding out what really needs to be done? Because in, and I worked in the area with the young people. By the time the program is started, and by the time you get to know what you really need to do, it stops. And you're just constantly starting new programs and new programs, and the one that you have started has never finished. And there's got to be some way of finishing a program, because our young people are just turning over and over in the system. I have watched it happen over and over, and maybe sometime, if we could provide some type of recreation or something for them, they wouldn't have so much time to do all the other things. Early in years, we was told there will be monies to help do program, music program, dramatic things, drama, whatever. None of that money came through the courts or whatever. All we keep hearing is things to maintain, or put a bayonetta on what they're doing, but there's got to be some other ways to prevent some of this. And I just was wondering, is there some way the commissioners could address this if it came to the table? Because I really feel that we have to do something other than put them in courts and whatever. There's got to be another way.
I agree. I think number thirteen is the first step in that. Would you agree with that statement? Is this a program to help?
I think she's talking about...
Is that what she's talking about?
See, I've watched the courts, I work with the courts.
Oh, okay.
And that program starts and stops.
A lot of times, it's funding, the way the funding is, maybe you get state or federal funding for a program, and that's what we were talking about before. You may get it for a year, two years, and then they stop the funding, and there it goes.
But I have a problem. If it's a program that's working, and the commissioners know that it's gonna help this community, why not pick it up and keep it in front?
And we have done that, I think, we've done that...
But sometimes, we can't, because the general fund money, by law, we are mandated to use it for certain purposes, and sometimes it doesn't stretch out for additional things. There's only so much money in the pot, and we have to take care of the mandated agencies by state law. We're an arm of the state.
I know. And I look at the fact that as much money goes into keeping our kids in court, out of court, in homes that they don't need to be in, maybe we as a community need to sit down and see, can we work out something? I have problems with it, and I'm not just talking about what I see on this paper, I'm talking from experience.
Yeah. Annette, you need to tell us what you retired from, so people will know just exactly what you're speaking from. Yes, I do, I want, I want, I want you to say.
I have thirty-two years from the Neighborhood House Association. And we have all types of programs, we've been funded many times by the commissioners, and I realize that you have been very supportive. My only concern is the fact that they're starting and stopping, and we got to continue something.
And you also are very involved with the City View project, and so you've worked with these children, so you understand whereof you speak.
I'll say this about the reclaim, about the sex ban program, our intensive probation, those programs have been going since nineteen ninety-four, they're state-funded, that we allocate the money, you know, once a year, trying to keep the kids within this community, out of the Department of Youth Services. The kids are in the program, none of these programs stop. You know, we have a merit program that fortunately has been going on for four years. You know, we're willing, we're always looking out for the better way out to the communities, what can they offer as well? You know, got involved Catholic charities for domestic violence-type issues, and community would be, would be great, you know, for, to help the courts as well, because it goes back to the parents, to where the kids are going. We have a truancy program that's continued for some time, and again, that's been going on since, I believe that started in ninety-six. So we're trying, we're trying to do the best that we can with what we have. As long as we can keep each program going, we will do that, and like I said, I know that these are gonna continue to go on, so...
Well, thank you for your statement.
Shirley R. Johnson Overland, perhaps what we need, maybe we have them, but we aren't aware of it, is some evaluation of these programs as they go along, or reports about how they're functioning, how many people they affect, and whether there have been any good results, or what have you.
Okay, thank you, Shirley.
I know the Domestic Relations Court gives an annual report with a lot of detailed numbers in it. I'm not sure, Dan, does this, does the annual report address some of the issues that...
Yes, we have, we have all records on how well each, each program's doing. We send it down to the Department of Youth Services, the number of kids that recidivate, the percentage of, we send down a percent, like, how many kids will complete each program, and we base on that how well we're doing, and so far, we're above that with each program. And going back to the community, I think that's, if they can give us or send anybody in the courts any kind of information, we're willing to do that, we're, you know, we have our probation officers out there, trying to see what's out there. We have, you know, little silos out in Oberlin, who's willing to give us their, their facilities to go out and use, we're finding these things. And it'd be wonderful if the community would come up, and instead of saying, you know, "The courts aren't doing nothing, the courts aren't doing nothing," but we're out there trying to find something for these kids. Believe it or not, the probation officers aren't looking, and probably the police department will, will back this up. We're not looking to commit these kids, we're actually looking to help them out, to prevent some of these things that are going on for now. And it goes back to getting with the parents, too. You know, I saw something a few years ago, you know, out in Cleveland on the news, I was waiting for the sports to come out, and, you know, they said something about the teachers, they're not doing their job, they need to get better education. When they showed a football game, an inner-city football game, showed up in the stands, there were three people there. If the dad can't sit there and watch his son play football, he's not gonna read to that kid. So, these are some of the things that we're looking for, that the courts are dealing with. And communities can't send that stuff up to us, we're more than willing to look at that kind of, kind of aspect as well.
Talking about that, Ohio put, the governor put a program together, Ohio Reads First, and anyone that would volunteer some time, and it doesn't have to be much, to go into a school to read to a child, or to help a child read, and they will train the adult to do this, to help a child. So if there's anybody out there that has any time that they would like to volunteer, just call up one of the schools and ask if they have that program in place. Because I'm sure every school in Lorraine County and around the state of Ohio can use adults to help children. So if you have nothing to do, an hour or so a day wouldn't hurt.
The Health Department is also looking for volunteers for, to help kids with cessation of smoking, so that's out there as well, so...
How do you get this message across to the public? You know, that we're willing to listen to them, and their concerns to do things better? Actually, they are the government.
Right.
They're our bosses, they tell us what they want, but we don't hear enough from them. They pay our wages, they should be telling us, "Hey, this is what we want."
Exactly.
And if it's good, use it, and if it's not, we can always erase it. But we can come to some kind of agreements?
You know, Commissioner Vacy, what happens here, and I think what was being spoken to here is, unfortunately, by the time this gentleman's dealing with them, they're already part of the system. And hopefully, the state and through grant money will support programs that prevent people from becoming part of the system, and they're seeing this gentleman's programs. That's what we're lacking with. A dollar of prevention will stop five dollars of treatment later on, or trying to change attitudes. And unfortunately, more and more programs are geared to people that are in the system, and the people that aren't in the system are being, I don't want to say neglected, it sounds like a strong word, but there's very few dollars, and they're shrinking every day on prevention programs that are out to places like Neighborhood House before these children access to court systems. And I don't have anything against the court systems, but by the time you got them, they've already have a lot of difficulties. The idea to incentives, to like wellness block grant of prevention of teen pregnancy, and getting those dollars out into the community, to Children and Family First Council and other programs, prevention dollars rather than remedial dollars is what we needed. I think maybe that's what you were speaking to?
That's true.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No, I agree, there's not enough for kids to do, busy hands, stay out of trouble.
Anybody else would like to speak? Now, thank you all for your comments, I move to adjourn.
Second.